All right. Good evening, everybody. We'll call the Committee of the Whole for March 14th, 2022. For the City of Belvidere to order, the clerk will call the roll, please.
Brearton?
Here.
Fleury?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mahal?
Here.
Porter? Prather?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Ten present.
Thank you, and we don't have any public comment registered this evening. We have no public forum. Before we get to reports of officers, boards, and special committees, there's one, a couple of action items if you would bear with me. If there's no objections, I would like to deviate a little bit from the schedule this evening. If we look at items 5A and B, Sidewalk Cafe ordinance, which will be 533H on the agenda this evening, and item B, the Heritage Days and Heritage Days BBQ showdown for 2022, that, those agenda items, I would like to move those, if there's no objection, to up under item 2 after item 2D, after the resolution directing the planning department to publish the zoning map of the city of Belvidere and before the community development budget.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to that effect. We have a motion by Alderman Snow, a second by Alderman Porter. Any objections, any comments? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So, under reports of officers, boards, and special committees on item 1, building, planning, zoning, unfinished business, we have none. Item 2, building, planning, zoning, under new business, we'll go with item A, building department update. Kip Countryman? Mr. Countryman?
Thank you, Your Honor. For February, we had 35 total permits, 11 of which were commercial for a value of just under $300,000. Some projects we're working on is an expansion to Crusader Clinic. The Murphy Oil project is going forward with demolition and a rebuild. Walmart is doing some remodeling and Oakbrook Storage Units for property maintenance. We closed 20 properties and we have 17 open. I'll entertain any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Countryman?
I did one more thing. I did hear through the grapevine that we're probably projected to do just as many houses this year as we did last year, and last year we did 61, so.
Okay. All right. That's good news, thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing no questions. Thank you, Kip. Item B, planning zoning department update. Gina? Del Rose?
Been busy with meetings and emails and phone calls with potential projects and developers, so I expect a busy year for that. There are currently six cases going for public hearing in April. The Murphy Oil, which is a gas station in front of Walmart, a Dairy Queen, and then several cases related to Project Kelly. So, it'll be a busy April public hearing, and I expect May's public hearing to be even busier with numerous cases. And working on Heritage Day stuff, working with the Health Department on one of their projects. Historic Preservation sent out property maintenance grant notifications, so I've been having several phone calls from potential applicants for that, working on their fundraiser, that'll be April 2nd, and just day-to-day stuff.
Alderman Snow?
Dairy Queen, where is that allegedly?
Next to the Taco Bell on North State Street.
Any other questions for Ms. Del Rose before we move along here? Yeah, that's gonna be a nice addition to the community, so we're excited about that. Alderman Snow?
So, with the planning and zoning and historic preservation, are we, are they fully staffed with board members, or are we looking for people still?
Plan Commission is down, one board member, for those that have not heard, Andy Reyes. His health is not the best, so he had to step down from Plan Commission. I do know there are several people that have been communicating with some interest, so that will come before you at some point. Historic Preservation, we still have two openings. I have heard there's one person that is considering it. She recently transferred jobs, so I think she's trying to get settled in the new job before she throws another thing on her plate, but yeah, so there are some openings, but we are getting more interest now.
Okay, any other questions? Alderman Porter?
Yeah, what night are those meetings for Historic?
Historic Preservation meets on the 4th Tuesday of the month at 5:30 in this meeting, in this room.
Okay. Anything else? All right, and then item C. Gina, I was gonna take that, but I'm not sure I can pronounce her last name without butchering it. Want to help me out?
Sandy Omeotek. She lives in the Dutton House on Lincoln Avenue, you know, Belvidere's haunted house. Also works for the library. She's been on the commission for several years and would like to be reappointed.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion then, and just so we're clear, the requested motion is to, motion to consent and to approve the appointment of Ms. Omeotek to the Belvidere Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term, ending in May of 2025. Motion by Alderman Snow, do we have a second? Second by Alderman Fleury. Any discussion regarding that motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And item D, resolution directing the planning department to publish the zoning map of the city of Belvidere. Okay, motion by Alderman Snow, second, second by Alderman Porter. Any discussion regarding that? And I think the city attorney may have a comment regarding that.
It's required by statute, and yes, there were two map amendments in the last year. I don't recall what they were, Eugene?
The gas station on North State Street, that rezoned from single-family to planned business, or neighborhood business, I'm sorry, and then the house at 2106 North State Street that annexed in and rezoned to residential.
Alderman Snow?
And what's the latest scoop on the comprehensive plan?
I believe that is gonna be part of the budget discussion tonight.
All right. So, we had a motion and a second then on the floor, is there any other questions, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution directing the planning department to publish the zoning map of the city of Belvidere, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. And then with the motion to change our agenda slightly, we have the Sidewalk Cafe ordinance moved up from 5A next, which that ordinance was 533H, and we have that on the floor, could we have a motion to that effect, to at least get it on the floor for discussion, a motion, motion to pass?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know that we have a motion to pass yet, because we don't know what the motion is. This is brought for discussion purposes. There's an existing ordinance that we adopted, excuse me, each of the last two years, that modified the City of Belvidere code to allow establishments that serve alcohol to have a sidewalk cafe and serve, I'll call it that, sidewalk cafe. The base code and the existing code that we have only allows that if at least 50% or more of the establishment's income is derived from food sales. The intent, when we did that way back in the day, was if you're a restaurant and you want to have someone with a glass of wine or beer with their food, they can do that as part of the sidewalk cafe. As a part of the COVID restrictions, when they shut down the insider restaurants and the inside of bars, the city did two different ordinances, one each year, basically the same ordinance, temporarily amending that section to allow a bar that's not primarily a restaurant to serve alcohol as part of a sidewalk cafe with some additional restrictions as far as location and oversight and things like that. So, the question before the council tonight is whether, because that temporary ordinance expires at the end of April, whether we want to do that again for one more year, whether we want to let it lapse and go back to the old ordinance, or whether we want to amend the old ordinance permanently to allow a bar to serve alcohol as part of a sidewalk cafe
We have a motion then on the floor to extend ordinance, the ordinance, or readopt the ordinance, I guess might be more appropriate. Okay, for discussion's sake, do we have a second to that effect? Second by Alderwoman Mohal. Okay, so, open for discussion. Alderman Brearton?
Thanks. So, what good do we think extending it a year is gonna do? What's the point of that?
To allow it to continue and evaluate it, to see if we want to repeal that portion altogether or keep it in effect.
Alderwoman Frey?
Attorney Drell, what are the hours for the sidewalk cafe?
I am checking the amendment that we did, see if it's in there, and then I have to check the base code. I want to say they had to be closed by 10:00 PM. I don't see it in the base code, so let me check, or in the amended code, so let me check our base code.
I think the question with this was to get it in front of the council to either readopt it, to not, to at least get it for discussion, to readopt, whether or not the council has no interest in that, or I think the other option was to make it a permanent fit.
I, I, sorry, Mr. Mayor. I apologize, I was wrong. The operation is until 9:00 PM daily, so they close at 9:00.
Alderman Fleury?
Thank you. With this, so did each business have to fill out an application to be a part of this, or was it blanket for the whole city?
No, each one had to apply for, well, generally in a sidewalk cafe, they have to apply for a license and get one from the city. With respect to this temporary amendment, they still had to apply, they had to show us a sketch of whether, if they're gonna have tables where they're gonna be and things like that, to make sure they complied with ADA requirements on the sidewalks. But the ordinance did waive the fee that we charge for a sidewalk cafe during the COVID times, that was for anybody getting a sidewalk cafe.
Continue.
Do we know how many businesses took advantage of this cafe, kind of easing the regulations on it?
Last year, only one. The year prior to that, three.
Thank you.
Alderman McGee?
Yeah, I'd like to see the original ordinance amended. I don't think we had any problems that I know of, maybe Chief Woody can speak on that. But the amendment I'd like to see is, I don't know that, I'd like to see the 50% food removed, as long as they serve, you know, frozen pizza or something, I would surely think that that would be sufficient to have outside seating, in my opinion.
So, Section 7, I think, specifically deals with that, if I'm correct?
Do you have the amendment ordinance?
Under the ordinance that we have, yes.
That, what that section did is that it, the base code says the only way they could serve alcohol was if at least 50% of the revenue came from the sale of food. And we did it that way, so it didn't, similar with a video gaming establishment, they might make most of the revenue from gaming, so they were not out of the box heavy from the sale of food. This amended that to provide that pretty much anybody that served alcohol could serve it, as long as they had a license and got this permit.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay, Alderwoman Freyther?
So, if you had mentioned that the fee had been waived last year as well, what is the fee to apply for this? And in addition, I would be interested in hearing your opinion on that from people in this area. Did you guys notice an uptick in problems to the rate of heavyness upside?
No. Should note that we don't necessarily keep statistics just based off of sidewalk cafes particularly, but anecdotally speaking, no, there wasn't an increase in disorder leads or batteries related to the alcohol consumption as it pertains to sidewalk cafes, no.
Anybody else? Alderman Brearton and then Alderman Porter?
Thanks again, Mayor. So, so this is the third time now that I gotta, that I have to vote on this. So, I remember, I think it was the second time that I pushed for it to be, yeah, the majority food, that they had to serve food, so I don't really plan on changing my mind on that. I guess that's all I got.
Okay. Alderman Porter?
Yeah, I guess I would have to agree with Rick. I don't, I think we need to keep it at the 50% food rate, just to keep it, you know, more in line with what we're looking for in the city, you know, kind of the Lake Geneva kind of thing, where you're having a restaurant kind of thing, where you're serving alcohol, but you're also serving food, and I just think if we change it to just alcohol, it could be just a drinking establishment, and that could be, you know, detrimental to the, what we're actually trying to achieve with the sidewalk cafes.
Thank you. Alderwoman Freeman and Alderman Snow?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I remember when this came up, and I believe I gave a speech about it. There was a few aldermen that had their hair on fire, that, oh, children are gonna come up and grab drinks off the tables, and they have to serve food, or we're gonna have all kinds of rats and garbage and infestations and police calls, and obviously, none of that happened, and I don't think that, I don't think that the people who have been doing it for the past year are mostly food service people, so I don't see why that is even, I don't, I don't see why that's in there at all. I never did.
I will say, I don't think we've heard any objections from anybody regarding, like, they object to this ordinance regarding the sale of food, I don't think, I haven't heard any. So, in that regard, I don't think that I've heard anybody say that they would object to the way that intent of this ordinance was originally written. It's my understanding, unless somebody hears it, heard anything contrary to that, or, so, I will say, I will say that. Alderman Snow?
Yes, so, I was one of the people that wasn't a big fan of this, and again, I'm willing to stick it out there and try it under this premise so that we can evaluate it, and it may, with the COVID and the economy and things may, people may participate more so than they did previously, but the, I think the food thing is a good thing to keep in there, and to be quite frank, unless somebody brings it to the city's attention, nobody's gonna go policing that portion of it. So, if for some reason, a bar slash video gaming decided to do that cafe portion, somebody would most likely make an issue of it if it was a problem, and then they would be policed accordingly, as it were, so.
We actually have a pretty good idea of which establishments are taverns that serve food and those which really, they might have some peanuts or maybe a frozen pizza or something like that, we'd have a pretty good idea when they applied, or they qualify, may ask them to show or demonstrate that they do, are in compliance, so.
Who did I miss? Alderwoman Mohal?
Excuse me, I was just thinking, thank you.
Could you use your microphone, please? I think they're always calling me and saying, somebody's not using their microphone, so, if you would, please. Thank you.
So, I forget about it.
You're not that loud.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the 50% sales, you know, food sales, I'm kind of in agreeance, I think, you know, up to this point, we haven't really shown any issues with anything. Why are you making, you're making a face?
I'm trying to follow you.
I like to see other, you know, businesses take place in that, so, and if we're not actively policing and someone's not going to be in charge of making sure that 50% of their sales comes from food, is that, that is just something that you really just feel like you know who complies with that and who doesn't?
If it's a close call, we wouldn't know, but, I mean, I think most of us know who has, who has a kitchen, who doesn't.
Right. But even if they have a kitchen, I don't think necessarily they're doing 50%. So, I was just curious about that portion of that, if that is somehow you're having them prove that or not.
And that was a conversation we had, we did the original ordinance, the reality being, that was gonna be difficult to enforce, because it's not only, you know, do they have a kitchen, if they don't have a kitchen, it might be easier, but who's gonna sit down, look at all the receipts, and actually compare how much they sold in the previous year of each side of the, of the aisle, food or alcohol?
Can I just respond to that, please? Thank you. So, that's what makes me kind of think that maybe we'd be okay without that part in there.
Thank you. Alderwoman Porter?
Well, I just go back to thinking, you know, of what I've seen in different cities, higher-class cities, you know, in Wisconsin and places like that, which I discussed before, but my perception of a sidewalk cafe is a family-type place, it's a cafe where people can go with their families and have lunch and that type of thing in a nice setting and, but also that they serve alcohol, so that's, that was my idea of what a sidewalk cafe should be, and, you know, kind of what we're looking for, I think, in the city here.
Thank you. Did we miss Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. If I recall, when this first talk came about Nico's Cafe, who doesn't have a kitchen other than, you know, frozen pizzas, if I, if I recall, offered that people could have food delivered to their sidewalk cafe, they could go pick up food from local establishments and, and bring it there. I mean, heck, you could have packed a sack lunch at home and brought it to Nico's and sat there and ate it, and because we put this 50% food thing in, we lost out on an extremely viable business, namely a Pointer's Restaurant in this town, so I'm not trying to deter any of that anymore.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Frey, then Alderwoman Mohal?
Thank you. That's my ward, and I've had a couple complaints in the past, and it's usually noise, you know, so I want to, you know, who's gonna enforce that, like, the police, if it's after 9:00? And at one point, somebody called me that was in a different business on State Street and said that they were drinking down by the road, so, I mean, they have to keep that in check, but mine is the noise violations, that's my objection.
Thank you. Alderwoman Mohal?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Marsha, and when you think about maybe that kind of model of someone like Nico's that allows you to bring in food from other places, I've been to places that kind of do that, and a lot of people partake in that, and it supports, you know, the other businesses in the community as well, that maybe don't offer alcohol or, you know, don't have that kind of atmosphere, maybe.
Anybody else? Alderman Snow?
So, I would recommend that it, for those that, so we can vote it up or down, one way or the other, to make a motion to strike the food portion.
Well, we have, we have a motion right now to readopt this ordinance as it, as it stands, that's the only thing we have right in front of us.
Right, and I'm just, Mayor, if I, I don't want to step on Mr. Snow's toes, but the ordinance you're readopting is the one that would allow, that would waive the fee, that would allow alcohol sales without food for one more year.
Without food?
Correct. And of course, the requirements we put in there to try and curtail where they weren't, things like that. So, it'd be the temporary ordinance that we adopted each of the last two years, would simply go on for another year, to allow, to allow... um, to allow, to allow sale alcohol without having food, waive the fee unless you want to put that back in, and, um, and the restrictions we put in place as well.
Alderman Snow.
As I read Section Seven, which is what we're re-adopting, it talks about having at least fifty percent. Am I missing something?
It says, it's poorly written.
Uh-oh.
And I wrote it. The last clause shall not be applicable nor enforced during fiscal year 2022. What's saying is that portion of, uh, subsection four, A three N four is a very long section. And all this says is, the portion of that section that says you have to sell food is not applicable during fiscal year 2022. So I'd be simply changing that twenty-two, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three.
So at this point, we're looking at extending this, which doesn't require food at this point.
That was your motion.
Okay, that's what I, but as I was looking at it, like you said, it confuses the issue. But if the interpretation by legal counsel is that it doesn't apply, that's what's gonna be important if somebody raises cane.
Alderman Porter.
Well, I guess if we're gonna do this, and I, I would recommend that we at least put the fee back in, since the economy is, is picking up and everything, and businesses are, you know, not struggling like they used to. So I would recommend maybe putting the fee back in.
It's a motion to amend, to add the fee. Okay? Do we have a second to that? Second, uh, by Alderman Snow. Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman Snow, to amend, uh, Section Two, then, uh, to add the fee, uh, seventy-five dollars, as the application fee is required. Okay? So. Alderman Burton?
Thanks again, Mayor. So like I said, so this is at least the third time that I have to vote on this. Um, you know, sometimes it's not so fun, uh, voting one time, then you have to do it again, and then a third time. And I think, I think this was voted on before I was an alderman, too. Um, so this could be like the fourth time, if I'm right. Um, and I know this room was packed, and it was like a trial, uh, like more than, than one night. And, you know, over time, we came to the compromise, which, which is the ordinance that's written. Um, and because of the, the virus, or whatever you wanna call it, um, we had some leniency. Um, I think the virus is over. Um, so that's the only reason I would see extending this.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion?
And Mr. Mayor, this is on the motion to amend, to reinstate the seventy-five dollar fee, only at this point.
So, we have that on the floor then. So, all those in favor of the amendment to install these, reinstate the seventy-five dollar application fee will say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
We'll have a roll call, please.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Nay.
McGee?
Nay.
Mohal?
Nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
That amendment passes, and then we have to have a motion to pass, uh, the ordinance as amended.
No, Mr. Mayor, we already have a motion to pass the original, or motion to pass that original motion. That sounds bad. Um, so it's, uh, now we're discussing the motion as amended. If there's any further discussion, we'll vote on the motion as amended.
Okay. Do we have any, do we have any discussion regarding that? So we have the motion on the floor as amended, which, as amended is the fee.
Correct. It'd be a motion to, uh, essentially re-adopt and extend for one year ordinance five thirty-three H, uh, with the amendment being to essentially delete Section Two of that ordinance, which waived the fee.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Motion. Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Is there any opposed?
No.
Okay, motion pass. Okay, thank you. Then we have, uh, moved up on the agenda Heritage Days and Heritage Days Barbecue Showdown for twenty twenty-two. And that is a memo regarding the Heritage Days Festival that you have in front of you. And, uh, with that memo there, I was not here, um, obviously, regarding what was done with, um, that in the past, but I think this requested motion probably cleans that up a little bit. And, uh, so I would ask that we have a motion, uh, if we would, we could get a motion regarding that that is noted in the memo. If you want to read it, please do. Okay, motion by Alderman Snow, please read it. Alderman Snow?
Motion to authorize the mayor to execute such agreement and expend funds in the Heritage Day account currently at thirty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents. Further, the mayor is authorized to execute such agreements and extend additional, expend additional funds which are received as donations or contributions for the Heritage Day Festival and Heritage Day Barbecue Showdown. Section five slash eight dash one dash seven is abrogated for this purpose.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second, uh, by Alderwoman Prather. Any discussion regarding that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposed, nay. Okay, motion passed, thank you. And then we will move along here on the item E, which is, uh, the twenty-three, twenty twenty-three Community Development Budget. No, you're fine. You're fine.
I think I got what you gave me. Is everyone ready? Okay, as you can see on page one is our projected revenues for twenty twenty-three. We have increased these from the previous year due to the fact that the, uh, housing boom, um.
It's got a nice root to it. You haven't said that for quite a while.
Correct. It hasn't really, um, I mean, it's going pretty good for the short staff that we have. So we're, we're managing it, but as soon as the weather warms up, our office picks up. Today was out of control. So, um, I'll entertain any questions on page one. Marsha?
Thanks, Kip. So, um, where are we at the actual for fiscal year twenty-two? Are we above or beyond or right on track with our, um, actual projection at one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar budget?
I believe we have, to date, when we originally just started discussing the budget, we were proposed to beat that pretty good. Without having the exact figures in front of me, but we were at eighty, eighty-five percent of what we proposed, and that was back in February, January, February. On page two, um, shows that we're projecting a twenty-one percent increase in building permits. I think when we did the, I guess, that figure for, is that right then? We'd be at seven percent?
That's the, that was just.
That was just budget, okay. Okay. So that was projected. I'll entertain any questions on that? Page three, uh, our projection for electric permits. And that figure is around twenty percent, twenty-one percent, based on what we're seeing for the increases in the housing. Uh, page four, electric, electrician certification fees, as we kinda keep that the same based on years past. If we do get new contractors in town working, they are required to register with the city, so that figure fluctuates.
Question. Do they, um, have to register, re-register every year, or once is enough?
Annually. So letters go out. I believe Kathy starts sending the letters out at the end of this month. And I, you see the registration fees, fifty dollars. Uh, page five, um, we're still using the state. Um, if that changes, we kinda have a gentleman's agreement. If we're using the state, we're really not supposed to charge plumbing permit fees. We do try to charge enough to cover our administration fees to process those permits. Yes, Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So, Brent, this is what I was talking about earlier today. Um, back in fiscal year fifteen, we had Greenview Water Meters at like a huge four hundred and forty-seven percent jump. Um, so I guess that was under the plumbing permits. Will we have that same thing for the Four Seasons?
No, because the state is inspecting those. I did a flat balloon permit fee for those guys. Brent did collect meter fees, but as far as our administration, he, I don't know how many he's inspecting. If he's saying, as I see one, I'm letting him work that out. If he does ten at a time, they send him pictures or however they do that, um, as long as they're approved, then I'll accept them.
So, for Greenview, uh, water meters, each, each one had to have a permit? And we're not doing that for Four Seasons? Is that what you're saying?
No.
Okay.
I wasn't aware that we'd charge each individual lot a permit fee.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that's what happened or not. I just see that for the fiscal year fifteen, um, we had fifty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars in plumbing permits at a four hundred forty-seven point eight-six percent increase. And over to the side, it says Greenview Water Meters. So I'm assuming that that's what that was for.
Okay. I, I'd have to go back and, I wasn't here at that time. I don't know what transpired that, that year. Dan, did you have a question?
Um, so at this point, is the state plumbing plumber inspecting, um, working for us? Or is this something we do need to try to keep trying to secure our own in-house inspection in order to meet the rising demand potentially that's coming?
I'm always looking for a plumbing inspector. I, it's not easy to find a certified licensed plumber that's retired or that, because the trades are so busy right now, they don't wanna mess with doing two or three or four inspections a week. Um, he's handling the housing. He's also handling Boone County. It's, it's kinda set up to where the, the contractors know which days he's in the area, and he, he, so far, is handling it. But I'm always looking for, and we're budgeting for the, a plumbing inspector. Uh, page six, uh, HVAC permits would be your mechanical, um, heating and cooling. Um, and that's been adjusted accordingly.
So why such a big jump, though? I mean, it's almost, it's almost double, and I realize things are increasing, but had it, what was the rationale for doubling that one as opposed to twenty-one percent on a bunch of the other ones?
The original projection was low previously, so we just kinda caught it up. It was projected, the projections for twenty twenty-two, when the budget came about, we were averaging about twelve, thirteen houses a year. Were probably gonna be, we did sixty-two last year. We're probably gonna be in that ballpark this year. So these numbers are adjusted for that. Plan review fees, page seventeen. Uh, these figures I, are down. Um, I, with the developments that are coming forth, I would see this number probably going up a little bit. Sidewalk, page eight is sidewalk lot grading fees. Um, since I took over the department, we've taken that from, uh, we had it when I was here originally, and then, uh, Public Works took it over, and then we have since taken that back to kinda ease their load a little bit.
We greatly appreciate that.
Thank you. Kinda goes with the territory, so. Page nine would be insulation permits. That's specifically for additions and new construction, commercial and residential. Page ten is, um, fire review fees. Uh, we have since made it easier, one-stop shopping, that we kinda handle that through our department. Whatever the fees the fire department needs for their bureau to do their plan review, will, we handle that through us. But it goes directly to them. Page eleven would be zoning review fees. That's anything from fences, pools, uh, commercial projects, new construction, uh, that, depending on the number of permits we do for the year, that number's kinda hard to calculate. Code enforcement, um, these would be citations issued. Um, it's kinda hard to project this number based on, um, some of the issues that arise, lawn mowings, um, debris, things like that. And in addition to the, the ordinance we passed as far as depositing stuff on the, right away, so. Other permits are pools, fences, and signs. Other permits are pools, fences and signs. Kind of cupped that. We saw a pretty good increase once the pandemic hit, so we're just kind of left it there and see where it goes. Miscellaneous revenues, primarily reinspection fees. We don't get a whole lot of that, so it's. Expense reimbursement would be your planning reimbursement for certified mailings. Planning fees, we kicked that up a little bit in anticipation of the workload we're projecting this year. Planning miscellaneous, we kicked that up quite a bit based again on the, on the workload we're anticipating for the projects within the city. Halfway done. We'll move on to expenses unless anybody has any questions as far as revenues. Page one are salaries. Page, I'm sorry, that was page two. Page three is FICA. Yes? Marshall?
So back on the salaries, do we not employ a couple part-time electrical and plumbing inspectors too?
We have a, we do not have a, we do not employ a part-time plumbing inspector. We use the state, which is free of charge, and we do have a part-time electrical inspector.
Okay, so that's under, that's under the building inspector part-time? That's under his umbrella?
That would be, that would be our part-time actual building inspector. My guess is the electrical is someplace else because they're not employees. That's actually an independent contractor.
I believe it's under contractor services.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Page three is FICA. Page four is the retirement. Page five is health insurance. Six is dental. Seven is training. We did drop that quite a bit.
Question, in regards to the IMRF, I thought that looked like it had a pretty substantial drop. Is there rationale on that one? That's page four.
The rate actually dropped quite a bit. It's down to 8.16. I think it's currently 10 something.
Annually? Page eight, or did anybody have any questions on training? Number eight is repair maintenance equipment. That would be for the scanners, printers. The vehicles are on a different line item. Which would be the next page. We did kick that up. We haven't had, I did have to put a set of tires on one of the cars. Haven't done any maintenance to any of the, the three vehicles that we have substantial. So we did plug in a little bit more just in case something happened, brakes, tires, something. Page 10 is the professional services that went up in regards to plans for the comprehensive plan. And it also covers the money allotted for the plumbing inspector, electrical inspector, and the I-Works program for the permitting software, which we're really happy with. Mr. Breerden? That would be the proposed amount to hire a outside consultant for the comprehensive plan. We'll do a request for proposal and see where the numbers come in, but we're projecting it to be around there. Ms. Freeman?
Yep, Gina. Go ahead, you might be able to answer that one.
I just want to say that they recommend you redo your comprehensive plan every 10 years. Ours has not been done since 1999, so we are sorely outdated, especially now with all of the RFPs that Growth Dimensions is getting for, you know, developers looking, phone calls that staff is getting for developers looking. And I've already heard a few times of, well, I looked online and saw your comp plan, and this doesn't work, so I'm not sure if I should even be calling you because our comp plan is so outdated. So I don't want a bad comp plan possibly scaring away potential development. And again, it, it should have been redone a long time ago. It's, it's just sorely needed.
Ms. Freeman?
Thank you. I was just going to ask, so the state does all our plumbing inspections for just a flat fee of $17,000?
Right now, we don't pay anything. That's just we continually budget that money in case we do find a plumbing inspector part-time.
I think, you know, we're, we have been looking for a plumbing inspector. We had a plumbing inspector, and I think Kip had touched on that a little bit. It's hard to find individuals that are in the trades who keep their license up, who actually want to work part-time. And I think Alderman Freeman had touched on, if you go to item five, and she had touched about, on the Greenview, the Greenview water meters. I think that was because we had an inspector at that time and that that was in-house. And that individual, we did have fees that were charged for inspections. Then, now that we have a state plumbing inspector, I'm not so sure that legally that we can charge for services that we don't get paid for or that we don't charge for. So I assume that's part of the reason why, but I think that's the only difference that I can think of. I don't know when the in-house plumbing inspector, when that expired. I'm not sure. It was sometime before I got here.
That was shortly after I started.
Four years ago or six years ago?
Three, three years ago.
Is that it? I thought you were here longer than that now. Yeah, no, we, we had our own, we had same basis that we do our electrical inspections. We had an in-house, not in-house, a contract with a plumber to do our plumbing inspections. A couple of things happened. One, he retired. Two, the state started requiring not just any licensed plumber to be an inspector, but they want a separate inspector's license that a certified plumber had to go get. Nobody wanted to do that. It is hard to find somebody.
Any other questions for Kip Alderman Snow?
I guess this ties into what Gina had talked about for the council plan. The, how does this tie in with the county or does it? We don't, we're not required to meld ours together or anything like that?
We are not required for ours to mirror each other. The county redid theirs six years ago. We did have one meeting with the county during their review process to try to let them know what we anticipated ours to look like at that time so that they wouldn't be conflicting as much. I've also talked to the city of Rockford within the last couple of months because they were working on theirs, and they were wondering what ours could potentially look like. So again, that there's not conflicting. But no, they're not required to, to be together. It, it makes it easier if we don't have conflicting data, but they're not required.
Mr. Breerden?
Thank you. So Gina had mentioned Growth Dimensions. I just had a question. Where do they fall within this budget?
I believe there's an economic development line item in the back that would probably fall under more of the general fund stuff, Janet? Yeah.
Okay, thanks, just didn't want to miss it.
Any more questions on page 10? Page 11 are telephones, cell phones. Page 12 is postage. Page 13 is printing and publications. Pretty, cupped that all right where it's at. Page 14 is other contractual services, which is the cost for the GIS that we split with the county. And I believe we're looking at some software for that too, right?
Yeah, there's a possibility we might need to get new licenses for software through the city. We're trying to avoid that, but we budgeted the money just in case.
Page 15 is office supplies. We did decrease that almost 50%. Page 16 is gas and oil. We increased that a little bit based on the amount of inspections we anticipate. Lastly is miscellaneous expenses. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Countryman. Appreciate it. So we will move along here. Public Works unfinished business, we have none, item three. And we have item four, Public Works new business. Under four A, Public Works Department update. Brent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Update for council. In your packets, there should be the 2022 spring branch pickup map and information. So that'll be starting, that'll be going, occurring throughout the month of April. That'll be posted out on the city's website as well, as well as in the shopper. If you haven't noticed yet, there's barricades up on Logan Avenue. N-Tren, who is the electrical subcontractor for ComEd relocating their poles, started that work last week. The barricades went up over the weekend or, or earlier today as they continue that work. And once they get enough ahead, the general contractor will start his work probably around the first of April for that project, and it'll be, it'll be under construction the balance of the summer. So if you don't have to go on Logan Avenue, you may not want to.
Alderman Snow?
And so Brent, because it's been a while since we've seen the plans or the tentative plans for that. I've had a couple inquiries as to what's going on in rumor control and everything else. Do we have a plan that is actually posted on our website to tentatively show what's occurring as opposed to what's existing? Because people were saying, oh, that's going to narrow. There's not going to, it's only going to be one lane in each direction with a grass median and all this other stuff.
We can go ahead and post some, some plan sheets and stuff on our city's website for reference, but just for clarification, those options were all looked at. City council made the decision to, when we, to rehab, to move forward with this project. We're reducing the lane width. Currently, Logan Avenue has four lanes, 12-foot in width each, and we are reducing that to 11-foot width. We're taking a foot off of each lane, and we need to do that in order to make our compliance with ADA, American Disabilities Act requirements. And, and we're doing that by, by reducing the lane width because our, we had to purchase a few parcels of property to maintain a consistent 66-foot right-of-way. And by doing that, we will be able to meet those requirements. So in a nutshell, it's going to look basically the same as what it does now. Power poles are still going to be above ground. We looked at possibly relocating them underground. That was cost prohibitive, so the poles are still going to be there. They're just moving them out of the way into what will be the new terrace area created on both sides. There'll be a little wider strip of grass on both sides when the project's done. They'll have a new curb and gutter. Everything from the curb and gutter to the property line will be all new replaced. The entire surface will be milled off and new, by two minutes, put down. New pavement stripings. We're going to get new traffic signals at East Avenue as part of that project. And then, as you know, Florence Court reconstruction is also being done in conjunction with that. Two different contracts, two different contractors, but work basically being done at the same time.
And Brent, so is that including all the water and sewer that's underneath this to be replaced or looked at?
No, it was not just, again, because of costs. That would have probably doubled up the price tag. It would have been a four or $5 million project as opposed to the $2.7 million project that it is. So the only water sewer work is what's being done in order to provide new services for Florence Court. So traffic, as far as traffic movements, patterns, it'll be reduced to one lane each direction during construction. For the majority, there may be occasional times, short times where you might have to go around the block perhaps, especially when we're making the water sewer main connections in the Florence Court area. But otherwise, primarily, it'll be one lane traffic each direction during construction. That's all an update I have.
Alderman, Alderman Porter?
I'm just curious, down there by the Snyder's Drugstore, they were talking about moving that one telephone pole that was blocking the mural. Is there any more talk on doing that?
There was a cost provided to us from Frontier, and I want to say it was in the neighborhood of $3,500. Don't quote me, I'd have to go back and look, but I'm thinking that's what was the approximate cost. So we'd have to come back for the city council to see if they wanted to go forward with that or if there was any other funding sources that could cover that cost.
Okay. Any other questions for Brent on his update? Hearing on item B, certificate of satisfactory completion for the Little Caesars subdivision. Item B, Brent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in your packet, a little paperwork cleanup. In accordance with section 151.61B, city subdivision control ordinance, the public improvements have been completed for the Little Caesar's subdivision, a little one-lot subdivision where Little Caesar's is currently at North State Street. And I would recommend that city council approve a resolution accepting the public improvements that have been completed for the Little Caesar's subdivision.
Okay. Can we get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderman Snow. Any questions regarding that? Alderman Snow?
So Brent, this doesn't have anything to do with the adjacent lot where the car wash is going?
No, this is just for the Little Caesar's. It was, there was two separate subdivisions done. So that's part of the cleanup because the, the other one paperwork got done, this one lagged behind, so now it's being taken care of.
Okay, hearing no other questions. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And item C, well number 11, drilling engineering service, services proposal, Brent?
Memo in your packet. Based on our PFAS evaluation and the well number 11 preliminary design report, the city is proceeding with construction of a new deep well facility in order to replace wells number three and number four and allow for continued growth in the city's water service area. in the city's water service area. The next step in this process is to do the design bid and drill the new well. Attached to this memo is a proposal from Strand Associates for the engineering services required to complete the well drilling at a cost not to exceed $48,750. And that's the plans and specifications for the well drilling. A breakdown of this cost is included in the proposal. The new well will be designed for a capacity of 2,000 gallons per minute, which is similar to new well 10 that was constructed a few years ago. Actually, it seems like a few years. It's been almost 10 years now. The estimated construction cost for the well drilling is $800,000. The preliminary opinion of probable cost for an entire project is $5,135,000, which includes that $800,000 for the well drilling. Funding for this project will be through the Public Water Supply Loan Program, and the funding nomination form for this program will be submitted by March 31, 2022. That work was included in the previous contract we had with Strand for the design, the PFAS evaluation and design. The EPA Water Supply Loan Program includes principal forgiveness, the same as their sewer loan program that we are currently utilizing. The amount of that principal forgiveness will be determined once the loan agreement is approved. In the same way as a sewer loan also, the water loan will require a rate increase in order to secure the loan payback based on the preliminary cost estimate of that $5.135 million. In the current program terms, a rate increase of 25 to 30 cents will be required. And that will be implemented. A first payment on through the loan program would be 12 months after construction is completed and accepted by the city. So that rate increase won't have to be considered until the construction of the well and the facility is completed. Based on the schedule that was included, the well drilling portion should be completed by December of '22. The final step in the process, well facility design and construction should be completed by May of 2024. So conceivably, you'd be looking at a water increase probably in June, July of of 2024. Therefore, I would recommend approval of the proposal from Strand Associates and the amount not to exceed $48,750 to complete the engineering services required for the drilling of well number 11. This work will be paid for from the Water Plant Depreciation Fund. And I would like to add also that we just received some some updated information through the American Waterworks Association and the infrastructure bill that Congress passed and the priorities. And I think EPA ended up with $94, $97 billion out of that package. And their top, their second highest priority behind lead services is PFAS remediation and repercussions, which is this is a direct result of. So we're hoping to find some additional funding, grant funding to help pay for these costs. So that'll be something that hopefully will will be coming down the pike in the future too as we proceed with this project.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Mohow. Then any other questions? Alderman Snow?
So Brent, what exactly do the Strands and Associates really do for it? Because I mean, it's a well service that comes in and drills the well. And then the rest is a matter of having a contractor hook everything up and put a filter on, right?
So you do the plans and specifications for the well drilling, just like you do just like you do for the building and constructing of the well itself. There's EPA applications that have to be done, permitted, plans. All has to be submitted, reviewed through EPA. So it's through the entire process. It's basically no different than any other public works project that we do.
And also, those would allow us to apply for any grant applications without them. We're not going to, we're not going to be able to apply for any additional funding or grants.
Correct.
Okay. Alderwoman Freeman and then Alderman Freeman?
Thank you. So Brent, on page two of this, down at the bottom, the 30% contingency, is that typical that the engineering and the legal costs, they charge 30% of whatever the project total is pretty much, basically?
No, that's your, call it your fluff factor, your insurance. That's what we use on an estimating basis to make sure that we're not the low bidder on the project. So for the most part, we tend not to be. You don't want to be. You want to get when you, you know, 5.135 million. So we would hope that you would see it come in for less than that and then we're covered. But that's just basically an inflation factor that we put on all of our projects just to make sure we've got enough money to cover anything that could come up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Snow.
So in the overall scheme of things, the whole filtration is the biggest huge cost of this well. Is that a fair assumption? Or is that, can that cost actually drop based on what water supply they actually get as far as the iron or whatever has to be filtered out?
That's correct. You you won't know that until you actually drill the well and do the first pump test to be able to test it, similarly to what we ran into with new well number 10. We drilled the well and it came back with a high iron content, so we had to treat it. So then we had to go to the next phase and add that filtration and stuff. So they are including numbers in there with filtration now because you need to design for it if it ever shows up in the future. It's like PFAS, you know, five years ago, 10 years ago, nobody was even talking about PFAS, and now it's there. And there's methods, as you know, through going through the evaluation, that it can be treatable. So if that were to show up going forward, say initially, we're fine and we're clean and we don't need any of those treatment facilities, we still need to plan for them. So if all of a sudden the contents gets up there with the PFAS or the iron content increases to the point that we do have to treat it, we'll have to do an expansion. But the plans and everything will allow for that. The piping work, everything that we do for that construction, it'll be a seamless addition that we can add at the most economical rates to do that at that time.
So in other words, we build the facility to house what potentially might occur, but we don't necessarily have the filter that's costing a gazillion dollars?
Well, actually, we wouldn't even go that far. We'll, we'll build the structure to allow for the addition that has all that stuff and all the plumbing connections and stuff that it's ready to go. So it's basically turnkey once that work is done, and we don't have to redo anything. But yes, if it comes back clean, then we will not put it in initially.
Alderman Stevens?
Where is this new one going to be located at?
It is going to be located in the far southeast corner of Farmington subdivision.
My eyesight's good. 3081 Huntington Drive.
3081 Huntington Drive was a parcel of property that we required the developer of Farmington subdivision to dedicate to the city for the purpose of a new well site. So that's where it's going. So property acquisition is already taken care of. Plumbing supply lines have already been taken care of as part of the construction of that subdivision.
Any other questions for Brent regarding the motion on the floor? Alderman Snow?
So does that anticipate or wouldn't at this point a water tower or anything? Or that we a totally different animal altogether that if you needed to pressure?
No. As part of the evaluation in the in the siting report that looked at fire capacity and our reservoir capacity and stuff, and based on projections used through 2050, we are in good shape. We do not need any additional tower capacity, storage capacity.
Okay, hearing nothing else. We have a motion and a second on the floor to recommend approval of the proposal from Strand Associates and the amount not to exceed $48,750 to complete the engineering services required for the drilling of well number 11. This work will be paid for by the Water Plant Depreciation Fund. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. And Brent, item D?
Next up, we add in some bid tabulations for for upcoming work. First up is our landfill number one, groundwater monitoring. We received two bids this year. It's for a two-year contract that will begin with the July 2022 sampling event. Pace Analytical Services was a low bidder at $12,920. I would recommend approval of the low bid from Pace Analytical Services for the groundwater monitoring at Belvedere Municipal Landfill Number One from July of 2022 until August of 2023 in the amount of $12,920.
Can we get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Prather, second by Alderman McGee. Any questions? Alderman Snow?
So Brent, both number one and number two, can you tell us where the locations of those are? And I'm assuming neither one of these are associated with the county one that we share, or are they? Because it doesn't say anything about splitting the cost.
So landfill number one is on the Conservation District property, the old Spencer Pit. And so that is solely our responsibility. That landfill's been closed and kept and improved since, I think, '93, if I remember correctly. No, longer than that, actually. '93 was landfill number two. So it's an ongoing thing that we have to do every year. Once a landfill, they say always a landfill, and they are correct. So it's an annual monitoring that we are required to do, and we'll be doing it basically forever. So the price has increased a little bit from what we were paying before, and you'll see that reflected in the budget request upcoming this evening. So number two, landfill number two, is the one that we share with the county. It's on the county farm property on 76 by the County Highway Department, and those costs are shared. These costs are shared with the county. And the agreement for number two is is also, it's a joint, so it's approved by us and it's also approved by county board before that's actually approved and the contract is signed. It's a three-way agreement between the city, county, and the contractor.
So we do have a two-year search split? Or we did, that you mentioned, you know, split?
I guess that's a technicality for the attorney or however you want to read the motion, because we take it and we basically get billed. So you'll see in the budget, the budget that you're going to approve shows a contribution for all of our portion of the cost to the county, and you'll see an increase in that based on this latest bid results. So last year, for example, it was $50,000. I think it's going up to $68 or something like that. But we'll review that in a little while.
Any other questions regarding the motion for municipal landfill one on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. And landfill number two, Brent?
I would recommend approval of a little bit from Pace Analytical Services in the amount of $76,445.80 for the groundwater monitoring at Belvedere Municipal Landfill Number Two for two years, beginning with the April 2022 sampling period.
Motion by Alderwoman Prather. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Snow. Discussion, please. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. And moving along, Brent, your sidewalk replacement program bid tabulation?
So, yes, our annual sidewalk program, we received four bids back. I would recommend approval of a little bit from Globe Construction in the amount of $147,410 for the city's annual sidewalk program. This work will be paid for from light item 015310-6003 and light item 41510-7900.
Okay. We get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry. We get a second. Second by Alderman Stevens. Alderman Snow, discussion?
So in the specs that go out for this, I assume they're just given a lineal footage of what or square footage of what you anticipate. So the dollar amount is just quasi-budgetary. They may never see that $147,000. It may only be $100,000 in that regards. Or it could even be higher depending on how much work is truly done.
Correct. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's an estimated cost based on our estimated square footage of everything that we do. And it also includes work, the ADA ramps that we are required to put in as part of our overlay program. So it includes that cost as well. So those are adjusted according to what we actually see in the field. If it's going to be a lot extra, we'd come in for counsel for for further approvals. But yes, the total is our best educated guess of what we're looking at cost-wise.
Any other questions for Brent? Alderman Stevens?
Is this the same company as from this year, I think?
Correct. I think Globe, this will be their third year, I think.
All right, hearing no other questions. All those in favor of the motion on the floor for the to accept a low bid for the city's annual sidewalk replacement bid, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Okay, motion passed. Thank you. Brent?
Next up, tree bid program. We received three bids for the tree care work. I would recommend approval of a little bit from Enhanced Tree Service in the amount of $48,400 for tree work from May 1, 2022 to April 30, 2023 for the city of Belvedere. And again, as same as the previous project contract, you're going to see the budget in this for tree work is $40,000. So we will try to adhere to that as best as we can. I will note that this year's work were a little bit over budget just because of some of the emergency work that we had to do as well. But they are not doing any more tree work until after May 1, when the new budget begins. So the 48 for, again, is the contract amount. They're based on their unit prices, but we will hold to the $40,000 budget limit as best we can.
Okay. Could we get a motion then to accept the low bid? Motion by Alderman Mohow, second by Alderman Porter. Any discussion? Any questions? Okay. All those in favor of the motion on the floor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. And the item?
Next up, landscape maintenance bid tabulation. Again, we receive three bids for this work. I would recommend approval of a little bit from Lawn Maintenance Services in the amount of $21,775 for the 2022 landscape maintenance program. This work will be paid for from street department light item 015310-6002 and 015310-6826.
Okay. We get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Any question regarding the low bid on the landscape maintenance tabulation? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you.
Next up is our mowing program. We received one bid this year for the mowing work all by, or lawn care by Walter. There's three bids there. Because they are three different funding sources for those for those payments, I guess we would probably need three separate motions. So motion number one, approval of a little bit from lawn care by Walter in the amount of $420 per mowing for the mowing of the water department sites. This work will be paid for from water department light item 615810-6040.
We get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Prather, second by Alderman McGee. Thank you. All those in, any discussion regarding that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. Thank you.
Next motion would be the approval of a little bit from lawn care by Walter in the amount of $800 per mowing for the mowing of the public works sites. This work will be paid for from street department light item 015310-6002.
Okay. Can we have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Prather, second by Alderman Snow. Any discussion regarding that bid on the floor or that motion on the floor? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. Brent?
And finally, we have approval of a little bit from lawn care by Walter in the amount of $225 per mowing for the Farmington ponds. This work will be paid for from the Farmington Pond Maintenance Fund.
We have a motion to that effect. Motion by Alderwoman Frank, second by Alderman Snow. Any discussion regarding that motion on the floor? Alderman Snow?
So this is kind of generic with the whole thing. So obviously, lawn care by Walter was the only one that submitted a bid. Is that because we did put it out to whomever you send out letters to and publish? Or what's the deal there?
Hard to say. We send it out to all entities that have supplied us bids in the past. I think last year, I think it was only lawn care by Walter also last year. Why other people like Lawn Maintenance Services, for example, they've always bid on the ponds, at least that part of the mowing? They haven't. Again, I can't explain why, but you know, we advertise it. We send it out like everything else. Brent?
Okay. All right. So we get to item J, the public works budget?
I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I forgot.
He's anxious.
Yes, all those in favor of the motion for the lawn care, for the mowing program bid, say aye, please?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay.
So we might take a couple of minutes before So we might take a couple minutes before we begin this 150-page endeavor?
We'll take a couple minutes. Yes, thank you.